And I'm going to call the meeting to order. As you can see, we are without a mayor and a vice mayor today. So our first order of business is to elect a mayor pro tempore for the purposes of tonight's meeting. So if there is no objection, Commissioner Allman has generously volunteered to chair the meeting tonight. So if we have no objections, I would entertain a motion to appoint Roger as mayor pro tempore for the purposes of tonight's meeting by unanimous consent.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Roger Allman as mayor pro tempore for tonight's meeting by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Do we have to have a second? Yes, second be good. Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no objections and no discussion, okay, then the motion to appoint Roger is adopted. So the next order of business is to swear Roger in as mayor pro tempore.
Are we standing?
Okay. In this room, you sign your swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor pro tempore in for the city of Alma, the county of Grash, and the state of Michigan to the best of your ability. So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. You would sign here for me? All right. Deletions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Allman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. A meeting has been called to order. Are there any additions or deletions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay. If not, then we will approve the agenda as written. Is there a motion to that, please?
I move to approve.
Support.
Movement supported. Discussion. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. The approved, the agenda is approved. Roll call has been taken.
Yes.
Next item is the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda of the June 11, 2024 regular meeting. Make a motion, please. It's a minutes, I understand, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the June 11th.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 11th meeting. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. No? Okay, it is carried. Okay. Moving down to C hearings. Consideration of a resolution to set a public hearing for July 9, 2024 at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows to receive comment on the proposed downtown social district.
Move to set the hearing.
Support.
Moved and seconded to set the hearing. Discussion?
Just, we've been working on this for a while. DDA has a recommendation, that's part of your newsletter. We will not talk about newsletter since it's not on the agenda, so I'll save some time tonight. But if anybody would like to come to the meeting and learn more about it, please do so.
Okay. The social district has been defined. Yep. Neat, 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 neat. I like it. I like it. All right. No further discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor of setting the set of public hearing for July 9 at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter as the agenda allows to receive comment on the proposed downtown social district, please say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, nay. It is carried. E, request for purchase. Consideration of a resolution to approve a request for purchase to City Tech Systems Incorporated in the amount of $12,118 for annual renewal of City Tech software support and maintenance.
I'll approve.
Moved and supported. Discussion?
City Tech software is used by our Public Works crew for logging up work orders, equipment usage, man hours on different projects around the city. So it's something used day in and day out, so it costs to do your business.
Yes, it does. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, no. It is carried. Number two, consideration of a resolution to approve a request for purchase to Recreation Unlimited in the amount of $11,099.80 for four in-ground basketball hoops with glass backboards.
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion?
These backboards and hoops will be, there'll be two at Holiday Park, so each end, one at Highland Park, south of the library, and one at Kane Park off of Michigan Avenue in that area there. So those will replace the ones that we currently have there. And by glass, we mean fiberglass.
Right.
They will look very nice and a big improvement for those parks and hopefully kids.
They're tempered glass.
Tempered glass, okay, tempered glass.
Shaquille O'Neal hanging on them will not break them.
It doesn't, I can hurt it.
True, true. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is carried. Number three, consideration of a resolution to approve a request for purchase to Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $27,124.70 for replacement of five Alma Police Department mobile radios.
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved and support. Discussion?
Yep, they're basically after another life. State of Michigan, state police will not reprogram them for moving forward. They will not meet the new lean standards that come into effect on 2026. So looking at the options, so this was the least cost option that was available that will take care of the needs of the department, so.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is carried. Number four, consideration of a resolution to approve a request for purchase to the state of Michigan in the amount of $308,853.75 for Alma's portion of the Michigan Avenue reconstruction project.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion, support?
Back in August, of last year, we approved the actual agreement. At that time, we probably should have took care of and did the purchase order so we can pay from that. That's all this motion is, is create the purchase order so we can get this project paid for.
Okay, good. What's our portion of this? I don't know the money, but what is that percentage or the 308,000?
That's the total project amount, and we received in the grant $80,000, I believe was the grant.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is passed. Down to resolutions, E G. Consideration of a resolution to approve a request for payment to the state of Michigan in the amount of $11,305 for a balance due following a final audit of Alma Transit's FY 2023 budget, I assume. It's moved to approve.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Again, this is an annual thing with M.D. Transit. Some days, some years, we're owed money from the state of Michigan and some years we have to pay some money back. And this year, we're pretty close, I mean, $11,300 is not bad. Last year, I think we received a refund, not necessarily a refund, but a payment from M.D., just over $30,000, so it's even.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is passed. Two, consideration of a resolution to approve fiscal year 2024 budget amendments as presented.
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion?
We're going to take care of that here. We have a few, this is the last budget amendments for the year, July 1 is just around the corner. Most of these have to deal with when our books are closing, we still haven't received final numbers for any types of benefits, healthcare, those sorts of things. So there's costs that come in that we want to make sure that we're covered for so we don't have to come back for you after the books are closed into the new fiscal year to ask for amendments. And the human resources budget were increased at by $5,500 for expenditures and fringe benefits and other employee expenses for the year. Increased the police budget by $13,000 for the same thing, additional expenditures for fringe benefits and other employee expenses for the current year. Engineering expenditure budget by $10,700 for potential expenditures and fringe benefits and other employee expenses. Increased the downtown maintenance expenditure budget by $5,000 for potential expenditures in the internal service fund, public works and equipment rental charges in the current year, meaning that we've done a lot more work there using equipment that we have to come for and, you know, basically we're putting aside monies for future replacements of those equipments being used. To increase the cemetery expenditure budget, $34,750 for potential additional expenditures and then the internal service fund, public works and equipment rental charges for the current year. Decrease the city commission expenditure budget by $23,000 for net asset distribution of the insurance credit issued in the current fiscal year that reduced the department's overall insurance liability, so that's a good one. Decrease the sidewalk expenditure budget by $45,950 for delayed construction on the Charles Avenue extension to the future fiscal year budget due to rising cost estimates and the potential for the grant assistance. That's the grant we approved last meeting. Hopefully we get about that here in July and hopefully we do get it so we can just pay for the project altogether. But we have to move the destination from this budget year to the next. To increase the refuge collection expenditure budget by $14,140 for potential increased expenditures in the internal service fund for public works and equipment rental charges in the current year.
Okay. That's all of them. Any further comments?
And just phone file notice, Chris has on your memo, that there's a net zero adjustment to the general fund, so there's, nothing's coming out of the general fund, fund balance to accommodate these changes.
Good, great. Okay. Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Number three, consideration of a resolution ratifying the investment of the following city funds, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13 investments on there. Do I need to read all of those?
No, you don't have to.
Okay. They are all for the amount of $250,000 in interest rates ranging from 4.6, I think, to 5 and 1/4, 5.28 percent.
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion on that?
You stated it well.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That is approved. Consideration of a resolution to approve a street closure for Superior Street from Pine Avenue to Wright Avenue on Friday, August 16, 2024, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the Alma Fire District's 151st Celebration Lighted Fire Truck Parade. That sounds like fun.
Move to approve.
Support. Moved and supported. Discussion?
It's 151st because last year we wanted to have the approaches done in the fire hall. So we went by the 150 or 151, and part of the lighted parade will not just include city of Alma trucks there. They're inviting trucks from our county and the region, so should be a cool event. And then the next morning, from 11 to 4 is the activities at the fire hall here, so.
Neat, yeah, pretty cool. Sounds good.
What was the date again? August what?
August 16th, from 7 to 10. Downtown parade. Be there or be square. All right. Motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That is carried. Moving to agreements. Number one, consideration of a resolution to accept and authorize contract number 24-5267 with the Michigan Department of Transportation regarding street reconstruction of Pine Avenue from Washington Avenue to Warwick Drive. Also to approve the related request for purchase and authorize the public services director to execute the contract on behalf of the city of Alma. Move to approve.
Support.
Motion and support. Eric?
Yes, this is, if you went through, read that document, $385,000 is our STP, which is Surface Transportation Program. Every six years, we get that allotment to work on the surface of the street in the city. We have putting into the reconstruction of Pine Avenue. As you see in the project, in the agreement, it has the total number of $2,800,000. That is the overall project surface and underground for Pine Avenue for next summer. From Washington Avenue, pretty much to Panther Parkway is where we're looking at going. So this is the very first part of it, and this will be underway, and that's in the agreement for that dollar amount. So basically, the state of Michigan is saying, we're giving you $385, and you're responsible for the remainder of the project, which we know about, of course, so. But this is being done with PO, so we can be done, don't have to come back like we did earlier in the agenda with the project later.
Get it going. Going to be happy when Pine Avenue was finally finished. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carry. Item two, consideration of a resolution to approve a change order in the amount of $15,184.60 to the contract with Oak Construction Corporation for wastewater treatment plant hoist beam upgrades to allow for changes that would provide the ability for vertical lift of pumps and safer removal when necessary.
Move and approve.
Support.
Moved and supported.
That's exactly what they are. There's some pumps there that every once in a while needs maintenance, and the way they are removed now is very convoluted. Since we have the contractor on site, we will install these lift beams to make it much safer and easier for the crew out there to do their, do their work. Actually, it's not a bad price for a change order, so I was quite pleased with the numbers, so, and they're doing a good job out there right now.
Good, 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 good. All right. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is carried. Reports of officers, boards, and committees. We only have one. Shall we accept the city manager's report?
I'll have to receive.
Support. Moved and supported, the city manager's report.
All right, I have a very small report for you this evening, mainly for the audience too, so they have an understanding of what's going on. We did receive our preliminary scores for the clean water SRF, state revolving loan scores. As we anticipated, our points came in, what we thought they'd be, which is 40. 105 allocations were scored. Puts us in the number 57 on the list. Well, we kind of knew we were not going to be probably up there too far, but we did get everything that we could get from a point stand from that standpoint. Just as some background, last year, they did not fund any projects that didn't receive at least 60 points. But we won't have final scoring until late July, early August, so we'll obviously know everything then if we did get anything or not. But that's what we had, happened to us with the drinking water SRF too. Originally, we were told we got nothing, then we got some, then we got everything that we, they applied for. So fingers crossed, but don't hold our breath.
What's our major discrepancy? Why, what's the big thing that we're not getting?
This year's priority is they had PFAS removal. We're doing plant improvements, you know, so that's not necessarily working on getting the PFAS out of the system. Removal of groundwater infiltration, which we have done in the past and received some clean water SRF monies when we did the Interceptor Drain Project, Infiltration Project, where if folks didn't have storm drains, we did put some interceptor drains in, removed people's roof drains, those sort of things, and got them out of the sanitaries. So that was another priority, and we're not, believe it or not, we're not significantly disadvantaged, we're just disadvantaged. So if you were significantly disadvantaged, like our neighbor, St. Louis, you received extra points for that. And communities who have received violations, and specifically the severity and the ongoing condition of those violations, are, obviously, we don't want to be in that boat of having violations. That means we're not doing our job as a city or as a commission to make sure everything's taken care of. So those communities that have violations, we're giving some priority and points, and then there were some extra points involved in the severity of those violations and if they were ongoing or not, if they weren't able to fix them, so, which is kind of defeating in the standpoint of if you're a community that's doing what they should be doing, like we had to do if we were raising rates to pay for capital and those sort of things, and we just are looking for some extra help with loans and things like that, our low interest. It's kind of defeating, but that's the, where we're at right now and.
So it's not something that we could do better, it's just their categories and criteria this year just don't.
We could do worse.
Yeah. Right, that's what I mean. Do worse and score better, yeah.
That's really the only other option you probably have, or, but right now, our big thing is that we need to work on our clarifiers and a couple other things at the plant. So that's where our dollars kind of need to go right now. If we would have, if we were looking more at trying to getting PFAS out of the system, but that's a whole nother thing and a whole nother study and things, so.
Okay.
But there'll be more to come on that here in the next month, because once we get the final scores, then we'll have to make a decision on how we move forward with what we have to do, which is deal with those clarifiers that are at the plant, so.
Okay.
And the social district, we already talked about that, that public hearing is the next meeting. Just a quick update, the Northern Michigan Passenger Rail Line, the advisory group that they put together, myself and Brett Bobulitz is part of that group. We are having our first meeting via Zoom this, tomorrow morning, actually, and on the agenda is the project background, the rail study timeline and study deliverables, the importance, discussing what our advisory groups charge will be, and then the next steps in the process, so. It's, we're finally moving on that, so. It's going to be, yeah, there's a lot of people on that, from my understanding, on the advisory group that along the rail line, so. And then, fingers crossed, this, end of this week, second coat going down on the North Washington Sewer Line there at Pine Avenue.
Eric, that was done.
That was done today?
Oh, nice, okay, there you go.
Even better, that's right.
I approached it today. I was coming back from Walmart, I took the Pine Avenue route, just to see if I could get through yet, and it didn't look like there was a lot of work going on there, so.
They bumped the schedule up, which is good.
Yay!
It doesn't happen usually, so. So we're all to be open.
Cool.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the city manager's report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It is carried. Moving down to appropriations. We have no new business or unfinished business, so who would like to pay the bills?
Who would like to pay the bills?
Support. Moved and supported, pay the appropriations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Pay the bills. Okay, commissioners, comments and reports. Let's start with Lori down there.
I want to say thank you to our new parks person. She's doing a lot of good projects for the students.
Yeah, I met her yesterday. She's, she's good.
Nice to see you. That's all.
Got nothing. I would like to mention that I've got a chance to go through Nancy and Zach's new building, which is the Vermuelin Building, which I never knew until now, and it's now the apartments, I guess, at the Vermuelin Building. It's neat. It is neat. And as of Sunday, when I went through it, nine of the 14 apartments were rented. So it's something that the city was actively looking for. I love the way they have kept lots of parts of the old building in there to give it character. Most of the doors to the apartments were the wooden doors that you used to see in the old doctor's offices with the glass on top, and it says private or something on it, or one of the bathroom doors says women on it in one of the apartments. I think one of the apartments has a bedroom in the vault, which is amazing. The walls are that thick, solid concrete, and they had to cut a door through one of them, but it's really a neat building. I'm really, really happy.
Don't let me panic, will you?
Yeah, yes, the panic. Fourth of July coming up before our next meeting. Remind people to pay attention to the laws of fireworks, be considerate of people who are traumatized by fireworks, including dogs at some point. Just be considerate of your neighbor and do not get hurt. I would like to personally ask to be excused on the next meeting, July the 9th. Scrashy County players have that day, has the Tuesday in the park, and I have been asked to emcee that, so it'll be hard to be in two places at the same time. Eric, anything from you?
No.
Sarah?
No, I just want to say hi to Arlene and Martha, if you're watching. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. We are going to open it to the public. There will be a closed session after everybody is done. There's no need for you to come wait around for us to close the meeting. There will be no action taken. It's just a closed meeting, and we will go behind closed doors, and we will come back out here and just close our meeting out here, but no action will be taken, so. If there was anyone who would like to address the city commission, you may come to the podium and state your name and your address, and you have like five minutes or so. Chris, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Good evening. My name is Chris Olsheroff. I'm the Grasha County Administrator. I'm here to introduce to you some of the requirements that the state of Michigan are putting out onto our county related to the recycling initiative that you may have heard. Last year in March 2023, the state updated the Michigan Solid Waste Law, Part 155 specifically. Before they updated it, what it required the county to have was a solid waste disposal plan. They've updated it to now require them to have a materials management plan, which focuses specifically on recycling. Recycling was not part of the original legislature, but the new initiative is to increase recycling starting at the county level and then having a plan for the local municipalities that also follow. So I'm just going to explain some of the things. This is the first of direct communications to you. We do have plans to keep you in communication as part of our committees, as part of our work groups, and we will be willing to come here to be on the agenda when you, when you would like. I know that we have, we're working with representatives of Granger right now. They have been coming to our meetings, they would be happy to come here and explain their side of this plan with you also. So what the requirements are is that for every 10,000 residents that do not have curbside recycling, they're going to require us to have a drop site for those residents to bring their recycling to. The idea is to give everybody an opportunity to recycle. This law does not force people to recycle. This law does not force municipalities to include recycling as part of the services that they plan, but it does require the county to allow those drop sites where recycling is not available to them. The law has not specified exactly how the funding that they're going to provide to the county can be used yet. It just identifies the amount of funding. Currently, the state is about nine months behind in rolling this out, and part of that is writing some of the rules that the law does not specify, including what the funding can be used for. By 2025, we're supposed to have a waste recycle rate of 25%. Currently, Michigan's is 15%. I do not know what Grasha County's is, but I assume that it is probably less than the state rate at this time. By 2029, we are required to have all those drop sites in place, and we are also required to be up to 45% recycling. What we are required to do and what we're working on right now is coming up with the material management plan, and that's what will replace. material management plan, and that's what will replace the solid waste plan. We have opted to join a coalition that includes seven other counties, they have named themselves the Heartland Materials Management, it includes Clare County, Gladwin, Isabella, Macosta, Midland, Oginama, and Osceola. These counties, the idea is that they will be sending their recycling to the Isabella Recycling Facility, and the Isabella Recycling Facility is currently, has secured two million dollars in grants to upgrade the facilities for capacity and for A.I. sorting also. The goal is to kind of take after what Emmett County has done with their recycling, I don't know if any of you have traveled up or toured their recycling plant, they offer that quite frequently. Each of the counties will have four, or three representatives, one will be the D.P.A., D.P.A. is a designated planning agent, that is somebody who will oversee that for our county. Our D.P.A. is Sheila Barnaby, the deputy administrator. One business who produces waste, yet to be named and elected official from any level of government, so that could be county, city, township, and that is yet to be determined. The board does have plans to, I guess this is outside of the board, but the committee that oversees it does have plans to appoint Granger a seat as a major holler for the area, so they will be an active part of this going forward. So each of the municipalities offer recycling, they have contracts with specific companies right now. This plan will not require any of those contracts to be changed while they're still active. We will ask that they do, I know that we have worked with Granger, and Granger, well, I shouldn't even say we've worked with them, Granger has volunteered already to start bringing their recycling to the Isabella facility, and for other, other companies that have contracts with local municipalities, we will also encourage them to do that too, but once their contracts are up, whether they're three years or ten years, the county plan would require them to bring it to Isabella. Now, like I said, we aren't, we aren't looking to force people to retire or recycle, we aren't looking to force them to add recycling to their community, and we are going to fund this to the maximum amount at the county level that the state will allow us once they release those rules. Like I said, in the future, myself, Sheila, Jake Borden, the director from the Isabella Recycling Facility, and Granger representatives, we can all be here for a meeting and be on the agenda for a more in-depth discussion. We have held roundtable discussions, we will have more. Fortunately, Eric was busy at the time that we had the last one, but I will make sure that those invites go out, and you can pass them on to your commissioners too. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
No.
Nothing from Jamie? Okay. Okay. At this time, we will vote to go into a closed session, you people may leave, we will conclude the meeting, adjourn the meeting when we come out of the closed session, but there will be no action taken on our part at that, so you don't have to wait around, there's nothing gonna happen. Thank you all for coming, and I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Move to, send to closed session.
Move in supported.
See you soon.
Roll call or just?
Thank you. I'm gonna check in the time, so I have to keep the time. It was driven more incorrect.
Yes.
Yeah. For us, we just get a regular voice book.
Okay, voice book, Lori?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, yes, yes. And yes for me?
It's meant.
It's four of us. Okay. Thank you all.
Eric.